Six o'clock, so we're going to go ahead and get started. I call this meeting of the Shelton School Board, Board of Directors, to order for our October 12th meeting. Thank you all for being here. We'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Bob. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you very much. So moving on to item two, which is the adoption of the agenda. Have board members have an opportunity to look over the agenda? Is there any discussion or would someone would like to make a motion?
I motion we adopt the agenda.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Agenda is adopted. So we're going to move on to item number three. We're going to try something a little bit different tonight. We've moved the superintendent's report to earlier in the meeting. Gives us an opportunity to give some information before we go into reports and recognitions. So, Mr. Jesse.
Good evening, Board President Carr and the Board Directors. Thanks. Yeah, we're trying something new here. So I'll just give a little update. Lot, a lot going on, for sure. We are continuing to operate with in-person services for our students. A lot of effort done by our educators and our school leaders out there right now, just trying to really keep the kids coming. I was with some staff yesterday and one of the teachers was like, and they love being at school and they have appreciation, maybe perhaps, more for education. That was a cute comment from one of our teachers at one of our elementary schools and just, you know, it's always a good reminder about why we do what we do and our dedication to the students. We are averaging about closing about one classroom every 10 days or so, a little over a week. Some weeks are different than others, but I think we're holding together really well. I think, I, you know, we're quarantining, you know, anywhere from 30 to 40 students on any given day across the district, you know, about 4,400 kids. Brenda's got the numbers, but it's a little less than that. But that's not so bad because again, any kind of symptoms really can be keeping our students home. And so we just want to really make sure that we do that. And ultimately, by following these things, we're doing well relatively to some other districts, you know, we're able to keep our activities going. Kids are doing in-person services, we're providing supports for them, activities in clubs help keeping kids engaged. So, so far, you know, we're doing well, even despite all the, the things that the pandemic hands us. I was on a call today with OSPI. I also meet with dozens of other district leaders, seeing what's going on out there. Some of the same things that we're wrestling with, they're wrestling with. Everybody's, you know, short on staff, transportation's a challenge, a lot of people complaining about case tracking. I think we've done an outstanding job. I know Robert's on the call. Other school leaders doing a really good job around just really trying to find out where information, again, we are relying on the information that we receive. And so it's very private. And so sometimes, you know, folks get caught up into life. And so we're, we're working to make sure that we follow that, so we send the reminders all the time. And honestly, I think we're, again, outcomes matter. And so by us continuing on, lower transmission rates, keeping doors open is what our ultimate goal is. And again, I think our efforts, although not perfect, are, are pretty good. And then just, you know, around the vaccination mandate, we are wrapping up that process. Governor Inslee's mandate is that all public school employees, including those who have contracts or work in districts, volunteers, do need to be vaccinated by this October 18th, so next Monday. Right now, for the districts, for our contracted employees, we have a 91% vaccination rate. For the 52 employees that did file for either a religious or medical exemption, right now, we've either found an accommodation, they haven't vaccinated, or in the process of getting vaccinated, 61% of those, those 52 folks, so 32 out of the 52 have, we have found something to, in order to keep them employed here in the Shelton School District. And of course, we continue to work with them. I want to say a special thank you to Linda Arnold. She's here 15, 16 hours. She's giving up her weekends. So, Linda Arnold, I'm glad you came back from retirement. Welcome back. Here you go. So I just want to say special thanks to her. Continue to have contingency plans. The impact on specifically our teachers is relatively low compared to hearing what's going on at some of the other districts. We've been continuously planning with school leaders and teacher leaders at five of the impacted schools related to the, to the mandate. And so working through that process, working with the, the SEA. And so we'll continue to do those, those things that we were supposed to do and follow all the rules and regulations that we have in front of us. And so more to come. Next thing will probably be around vaccinations. By the end of the month, I would expect to hear information specifically for vaccinations for students that are ages five through 11. And indications are from OSPI that there won't be a mandate for students to have vaccinations. But that's just what I heard today. So I just would want to share that. I don't, I don't, we don't believe that to be, you know, all of these rumors, that they indicated that we're just, they're just going to continue to advocate for it, but not make that a mandate for students to be vaccinated. Last two things, well, yep, last two things, REL Task Force for English language learners, our task force, the application comes to an end this Friday. So the end of business this Friday, the application is right on this district website if you or anybody you know is interested in applying to be on the task force. And then lastly, I was able to meet with the Squaxon Tribe yesterday, had a great meeting with their education leaders. And so I'll be meeting with the Squaxon Tribe on a monthly basis. We'll be working together on some specific plans. So far, our conversation is a little better around attendance and discipline. I think those are easy things for us to start focusing on our goals, their goals at each of our schools, and in support of our students who identify as Native American. So that's a real positive note. So with that, thank you so much, Board President Carr. That's my comment.
Hey, thank you very much. We appreciate that, Superintendent Jesse. So moving on to item number four, which is community comments. I will read our community comment statement. As part of the regular school board meeting, the board invites community members to make public comments in person and/or by phone if conditions allow, by calling the phone number on the district website and entering the meeting ID. Our public comment procedure allows each person three minutes to speak, and comments will be heard during the community comment period as listed on the agenda. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the board is not allowed to discuss items not on the agenda, but may direct the superintendent to follow up on issues that arise during public comment. Please be mindful of how you present your testimony, as the board will not allow complaints against an individual staff member or student in open session, unless that individual has requested an open public hearing. Please follow the comment, the public comment procedure by stating your name when recognized by the board chair. All right, Bob, if you could just remind us of how to use our phones for making public comment, that would be appreciated.
All phones start out as muted. You can mute or unmute yourself pressing star six on your phone. Also, if you wish to make a comment during the comment period, please use star nine to raise your hand, which creates a small icon, which I see one person just did. Star nine, and then star nine will lower the hand again, but you will be called upon in turn by the board president, in which case you can press star six to unmute yourself. Please keep your phone muted when you are not speaking to minimize background noise that tends to occur inside houses. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Bob. So caller 0815, I see that you have your hand raised to make public comment. Please go ahead and unmute yourself by pressing star six, and then start your comments by stating your name. You'll have three minutes. I can see that you have unmuted, but I am not able to hear you at the moment.
Sorry, my phone was still muted. My name is Samantha, and I'm calling in today in regards to the firing of our district staff. And I say it as our district staff because they really are our staff. They are our teachers, our drivers, our pares, they are our neighbors, our community, and our students, parents, that are being fired. And I, this is maddening to me, when we all know that there was guidelines given by OSPI that could have allowed us, allowed you to accommodate them. We also know that there's money specifically given to our district that can be used so that there is no financial impact to our normal district operations. We are going to lose so many valuable staff that have made Shelton School District their home. They have given up and sacrificed their own family time. They've given up their free time by holding signs and standing on our district streets to get support for bonds and levies for our students. And how are we repaying them? By letting them go. We're firing them, even though the option to accommodate them was given. We are sending them down to the road to other districts that would gladly accept them and their experience. And as a parent and a taxpayer of this community, I would like to know why. Why are we so willing to throw away our teachers, our pares, and our bus drivers? Whether it be someone that is a new teacher or someone that has 35 years of experience, 35 years is a lot of time. That's a lot of students that have been impacted, myself included. I can't even imagine the amount of resources and money that we have put into someone that has been a Shelton School District employee for 35 years. We are already starting to see the impacts of losing our drivers. Seven routes today were canceled. Just doing quick math, that's 500 students that parents had to struggle to get to school. I know that, we all know that this is a poor district. It isn't King County. Our parents can barely get by on some days. So to have to miss work to try to transport their students, I can't even imagine that feeling for them. You know, to have to miss work to try to transport your kids to school and not even knowing until 5:30 or the last minute that your kid doesn't have a way to get to school. Many of you on this board are probably leaving soon, and this is your chance to be remembered, to stand up, to do what's right, to do what's right for our teachers that have done so much for us. Rather than firing them, why don't we do what we can to accommodate them? I would also like to express that I have sent many messages, some probably not so nice, some probably pretty rude, but I have sent a nice message to my child's principal about my specific issues and my concerns about my child's education, and I get no response. You all received on that message again today, and I really would like to know what the plan is for my students.
That's all I have to say. Thank you, Samantha. So would anybody else like to make public comment? If you would, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. All right. Not seen any other hands being raised. Wait another moment here, since sometimes technology takes a second to catch up. All right. So seen no other public comments. We will go ahead and move on to item five, which is, oh, hang on. Technology just caught up. All right, I see one more public comment. So phone number 3297, go ahead and unmute yourself by pressing star six. Please start by stating your name, and then you will have three minutes to give your comment.
Hi, my name is Amanda. I'm a lifetime resident of Shelton. First off, I would like to second everything that Samantha just said. And I also have complaints of the firing of our teachers. My children attend Pioneer, and they are being affected by Shelton School District Superintendent's decision not to grant accommodations for those with an exemption for the COVID shot. My children no longer have a bus driver, which means we have to take them to and from school, which also means we have to take time off of work to do so. That costs us money that we should not have to be sacrificing. That's your job to get our kids to and from school. And eventually, our employers will not allow us to take time off to do this. My friends and family also no longer have jobs due to the decisions of your superintendent. It's quite apparent, your superintendent has a personal agenda to do everything in his power to have everyone, quote, vaccinated.
Amanda, I need to interrupt you.
And is trying to punish those who have religious beliefs or medical reasons that do not.
Amanda, I need to remind you of our public comment procedure that asks if you not speak against an employee of the school district.
I named no names.
You did. Our superintendent is employee of the school district. So if you would like to go ahead and continue your comments without calling out a particular individual, then that is totally fine.
Okay. Our entire town is being affected by these decisions. When asked, we're told that these are being set forward by Governor Inslee's mandate. But Governor Inslee has made it quite clear that medical and religious exemptions with accommodations are to be accepted. But that hasn't happened. They're not allowing any accommodations for teachers that work directly with children. Why are all the other schools allowing these accommodations, like wearing N95 masks, weekly testing, or even teaching remotely? Instead, you rather lose great teachers and bus drivers and pares? Every school in the country is already short-staffed, especially with bus drivers. Why would we make it worse by firing everyone that has made the choice not to get the COVID shot? Religious exemptions for vaccines have been around and accepted for years. Why not with this so-called vaccine? You claim to be trying to accommodate teachers that work directly with students, but that is simply not true. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So is there anyone else that is hoping to make a public comment at this time? As a reminder, press star nine on your phone, and that'll raise your hand and give us an indication that you're hoping to make a comment. Richard, I see that you have your hand raised. You wish to make a public comment.
I was just, I wanted to clarify. He said, did you say, Jesse, did you say 61% of exemptions were granted, or 61% found like alternative arrangements? I just wasn't sure if I heard it right or something.
61% of the employees that filed for an exemption, either religious or medical, were provided an accommodation or are in the process of getting a vaccination or are vaccinated.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So see no other public comments at this time. We're going to go ahead and move on to reports and recognitions. So item 5.01 is report from the Student School Board Representatives, Quinn Martin and Richard Beckman. So let's see, I know Richard is on, oh, Quinn is on as well. So I think, Quinn, would you like to start tonight?
Yeah, I have no problems with that. So Cedar is going well into its, I think, fifth week of operation total. We have solved the majority of issues in which we experienced just setting ourselves up, getting used to project-based learning. A lot of the teachers are actually moving a lot more into project-based learning as a total, including math is now doing its first projects, as well as history, which are allowing students in, to take in a form of alternative education, which is really helping student morale, as well as helping staff morale as we all move into this sort of weird transition zone where hopefully by the end, we'll all be acclimated to it, and we'll all be able to work together in order to form like a real Cedar community. So far, the only real concern most students have is with the quality of food being served by the district. But we understand that at the moment, there's not much we can do about that due to Cedar's situation, as well as the fact that we're sharing a campus with another entity. Right now, staff are moving into their more searching phase, where they are sort of looking for projects for us to do so that we can took in, take in new knowledge, so that we can work together as teams, so that we can develop leadership, as well as a lot of our running start students are heading into their classes for the first time, starting last weekend this week, which is allowing them to get college credits and move on through education while they are there at Cedar, allowing them to work those into their actual schedule, which is benefiting the entire school as a whole.
All right. Thank you very much, Quinn. Richard, are you ready to give your report?
Yes. So Shelton High School, I think overall, it's going pretty well. There have been significantly less fights occurring since the last time we talked. So that's going great. The, our midterm is coming up, I think, I think tomorrow. So that's, that's exciting. And sports, and sports seasons, those are drawing to an end. The last time we talked, also, I think it had been homecoming yet. So that whole, that whole weekend events happened, and that, like, I think that boosted school morale, and people were pretty happy with that. From what I've heard from my fellow students, like the people I've talked to, some students have also had a lot of opinions to share about the staff hiring, primarily, or the staff firing, my bad, primarily that they weren't very happy with it, because some of their, some of their favorite teachers were being fired. And, and also, kind of a cold has been going around in the, in like the school district. There have been a lot of people, like catching colds and going home. I've seen a lot of people going home only for a couple of days, though. But yeah, besides that, like, school's going well. Yeah. And things are going well. So, yeah.
Thank you, Richard. All right. We appreciate the reports from our student representatives. We appreciate all that you're doing, serving your schools and serving on the board. So moving on to item 5.02, which is the 21-22 budget and enrollment update with Brenda.
Good evening, President Carr and Shelton School Board. I'm going to start with enrollment. I'll share my screen. As you know, we are closing the 2021 financial statements right now. They are due October 25th. So I'm still working a last year, but I wanted to give you an update on the 21-22. Enrollment is what generates the school district's funding. And as you can see, we have increased with October by about 58 FTE. So how it works is September through December, we are funded on our budget, which we budgeted at 4,125 students. In January, they take our average enrollment, and they will start funding us based on that. And they do make up back to September. So currently, our average is at 4,197.09 FTE, which is 72.09 above the budget. So that's a good place. Our kids are coming to school. The green cells you'll see here are Shelton High School and Choice. We don't have their final enrollments yet. They are due by this Friday for us to send to OSPI. So that is your enrollment update. Going to jump to some budget information here. I had in your board packet, we had done some calculations on staffing. The MSOC allocation is for supplies for each school that they receive based on their budgeted enrollment. And then I included September enrollment counts, our free and reduced count as of October 1st, and then what the per pupil cost is by building based on that information. As you can see, our three elementaries are pretty close in the per pupil cost. And then you get to the middle levels, and they're pretty close. High school is lower, and then Cedar and Choice are a little higher because their enrollment is lower. The staffing on these includes the administration, which is your principal and assistant principal, the office professionals, your paraeducators, certificated teachers, and your custodial staff of each building. And I was going to give you just a little breakdown. I did another piece of analysis today on the staffing versus the funding levels. So what you'll see on your elementary schools, they're running between 72 and 77% basic education. And the remainder of that is in special education, Title I and LAP, and some bilingual funding. And Olympic Middle School is running at 73% basic ed and 27% with the other funds. Oakland Bay includes 77% basic ed, which includes our career technical education funding also, and then 23% out of the other funds. Shelton High School is running 87% basic ed, which does include the CTE funds also, and then 13% in the other. Right now, Cedar is 100% basic education. I learned today, they will be getting a little bit of special education coming month, but right now, they're all basic at staffing. And then Choice is 57% basic ed, which does include CTE funding also, and then 43% of the other funds, which also includes our one teacher at the detention center that we have. And then another update for you is our grants for 21-22. I included this in your board packet. There has been one minor change since then. We submitted a new grant today. It's a federal grant for, I'm in, it's in the wrong spot, I apologize. I put in federal, it's actually state, it's administrative internship. Just came in today, and we submitted today for $2,140. So I will move that. But as you can see, we have almost $22 million in grants that we're eligible as of right now. And that is a fluid situation throughout the year, as new grants become available and we apply for them. So that is my update for this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Brenda?
Yes, I have a couple. Can you tell us again that last grant that?
Oh, yes. It's an administrative internship grant for one of our employees that is wanting to become an administrator. It's done through Association of Washington School Principals. And so that just came in today. They provide 20 days of substitute for that person to do that. So.
Okay. And a couple of other questions that I had. How does quarantining affect, or does it affect the enrollment numbers? You know, we heard that we might, at any given time, we might have 30 to 40 students in quarantine. So are they included in num, in these numbers?
Yes, we aren't impacted by quarantine. They are still enrolled in the district and receiving education during that time. So we're allowed to count them.
Okay. And then, did I hear right? At any given time, we might, or something about the number of classrooms that might be in quarantine? Was that one in a week? Is that what I heard?
Yeah, that's, no, it's just kind of wanted to put it out there about, you know, the public ask, you know, how often are these, you know, because they only know usually their own school. So this is a district, you know, really, we're only, really only at our elementary's level. And that's been, probably now, we're kind of settling into a routine of like one every week and a half kind of deal, which is just trying to say it's pretty low.
And then I had one question on the per pupil cost per school sheet. And that, those staffing dollars, is that based on with or without unvaccinated staff? Are these, you know, numbers from September before the mandate, or are these numbers that we expect by the end of October?
Those were, actually ran out of September payroll. So it was everyone still working at that point in time with their benefits.
Those positions will maintain to be funded.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions around enrollment? Other questions around enrollment, uh, and the budget update? Okay, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move on to item five point O three, which is the health and safety survey, uh, with Katie Diamond and Robert Heron.
Good evening, School Board. Thank you for having me tonight. Share my screen with you guys. Okay, can everyone see that? Okay, so we recently sent out a survey to our families, um, in September. And it was, um, to gauge the health and safety in our schools and how families are feeling at the moment. The purpose, um, was again to just gauge how families are feeling, um, about how their schools are doing safety wise. We had this open for about one week from September twenty first through the twenty eighth. And we had six hundred and eighteen people respond to the survey. It was a pretty decent number for, um, our past surveys. And this survey was meant for our parents and guardians. And so in the survey, we asked where we are doing well, and the number one answer by almost seventy percent was reinforcing mask wearing, followed up with communicating fam- to families with the safety protocols. So we also asked families what their primary concerns were, and the number one concern was their children catching the coronavirus. And their second concern was not sustaining in-person services. And so we asked them where we can improve and families, their number one, um, option was reinforcing physical distancing, followed by reinforcing hand washing and sanitizing. We also asked families to, um, to choose their top priority and what was most important important to them. And sustaining in-person services was the number one priority for most of our families, followed by social emotional health supports. We also had an option for families to make any comments. In those comments, um, we saw a common theme. Families worried about the social emotional health of their students. They're also, um, had concerns enforcing when sick kids should stay home. And they're also worried about masks not being worn properly, and they voiced their concerns that students need more mask breaks. And so with this information, I'll hand it over to Robert and what we're doing as a district.
Great, thank you. And just, uh, as I get started, I just wanted to also point out that John Holbrook, our new safety and security manager. Is on the line here with us too, and so we're excited about him joining our team. And reviewing the survey data, the main concern of the majority respondents is sustaining in-person services and their children catching COVID nineteen, which are of course directly related. Uh, to address this and other survey points from the community, Katie and I are working together to establish a mask campaign to encourage and remind students. And staff to wear masks properly while other at school. We're also creating new and vibrant signage to be placed throughout all of our buildings. We of course have current signage, but it's a little bit more industrial. In nature and people are having sign fatigue, so we want something that's going to start catching people's attention again and and highlight the need to wearing masks and how to wear them. Uh, we're also working on a healthy schools contest, uh, with a prize incentive, which will begin soon. We're also pushing out messaging on reader boards and on social media. Additionally, we continue to push out information on when to stay home and, uh, and when, when the kids are sick or exposed. Is that of course is the most important factor in health, our meeting or schools being healthy. Uh, also, we've created new and clear flow charts for staff and to help when communicating with families about sick and exposed students. Uh, we also be sending out, uh, our new safety and security manager to assess physical distancing. And hand washing and coordinate directly with principals to establish thoroughness and consistency throughout. Uh, and Katie and I continue to work together on consistent messaging, especially email and social media to drive information regarding when to stay home. Wash your hands, mask wearing, distancing and all of the things that are involved. You know, student, students and families are partners in this COVID fight. And so we really need their help and they need the information in order to make the right decisions. So this survey feedback helps us to see where we're at and fine tune our approach.
All right. Thank you, Robert and Katie. Are there, is there any questions, uh, around the survey, any discussion?
I have some questions. I apologize. Um, was looking at. The page, what is most important to you? And we've got some color coding going on there. I'm not sure I understand. The four, the one, two, three and four. I'm assuming that coordinates to. The four items with what's most important to you. But then there's four bar graphs. So is this coming from four different groups responding with their concerns or?
So, um, this is just breaking down the data. So we, the question had families rank the four options from number one being their most important to number four being their least important. And so each four category shows, um, each person's choices.
Ah, is that a highest priority to a lowest?
Yes. Yeah. Yes. Does that make sense?
So then the first graph would be. Would show that most people's. Everybody thought number one was most important.
Yes, so sustaining in-person services and then the follow. Is social emotional.
Right, and then the second graph would show. That. Some people. Thought that the social emotional health was higher. Some people ranked that number two, whereas other people didn't rank that till down at three or four.
Yes.
All right, I got that one. Thank you for. Helping me out with that. You know, I. I know that sometimes when you do surveys, you ask the same question in two different ways to kind of evaluate. The, um, consistency of the answers, the ability of people to understand both questions. But, um, it also seems like maybe there were some other questions that we. You know. Maybe could include for, you know, under the category of what's next. What about, um, bringing back scanners? You know, we've got the scanners on lease for a couple of years. We've gotten one year's use out of them. Are we planning to use that in the nurse's office? Um, can we use that in certain situations? You know, we may not want to go back to doing the whole school under scanners again, but, um, you know, is there? Just seemed like maybe could have had some more questions for parents and staff about. Some additional, um. Protections or something, especially since that's the number one concern is catching. Um, catching COVID, whether it's your student or, you know, someone there at staff. So, um. You know, or even the, you know, how the community feels about the N ninety five mask in addition to, you know, as a. An additional layer above and beyond a disposable mask, so. Those were just a couple of thoughts that I had as I went, as I, uh, read through it. And, um, you know, things maybe we'll learn. As we go along. Thank you.
Richard, did you have a question?
Yeah, um, can the results of this survey be found online, what you showed?
Um, this is not posted online, but I can post this, um, presentation online.
Okay, perfect, and, um, Rob mentioned a school contest, uh, or a safety school contest. What was that going to be? That that piqued my interest.
So Katie, do you want to elaborate on our thoughts on that?
Sure, um, so I believe we'll be announcing this next week. We will, we will be gauging, um, with district administration on which schools are following the safety protocols and practices within the schools the best. And there will be a prize incentive that we will keep a secret for now, but it's a good one.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Katie and Robert or further discussion? All right, well, thank you very much for that update.
Thank you.
So moving on to item number six, which is the consent agenda. We have minutes and personnel reports and some fund warrants. There any discussion around the consent agenda?
I guess I might have a couple of questions on the proposed personnel report, and they're not questions dealing with individuals in particular. They're just general questions. So I'm wondering, will, is there any anticipation or any discussion? Will O S P I. Require an accounting of any kind or there's, um, for, um, terminating staff that is unvaccinated. And, um, then the other question would be. Will they show up in personnel reports any differently? Or how do they show up in personnel reports? So while they're not, you know, it's not specific to. The content of the personnel report, but more about the structure.
Would you like to me, and for me to answer that way? Um, so yes, there will be a reporting. I just got the documentation on that on Saturday. And, um, the dates are coming up pretty quickly, so I'm monitoring that. I don't have all the details in my head right now, but yes. They've given us a template on exactly how they would like us to report everything. Um, and then in terms of the personnel report. If I understood your question right, are you talking about if there are dismissals? How would we note that on the personnel report? Uh, yes, they would, they would be reported on the personnel report exactly as to what they would be. So, so. Right now you would see termination if we terminated somebody or resignation if somebody resigned. If we have dismissals, it would be dismissal.
But the personnel report wouldn't necessarily state the call, the reason. It just says terminated or dismissed or resigned or.
Correct.
Right, okay, all righty. Thank you.
Any other discussion around the consent agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion.
To adopt the, uh, accept the consent agenda?
It's been moved and ex- moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, the consent agenda is accepted. So, moving on to item seven, discussion and action items. We do not have any action items this evening, so we will move to item number eight, which is our second community. Comment period. As a reminder, uh, community members will have three minutes to speak. Please say your name at the beginning of your comment period. And, uh, if you would like to make a community comment and have called in, please raise your hand by pressing star nine, and then when it is your turn to speak. Uh, I will say the last four digits of your phone number and you can unmute yourself by pressing star six. Uh, I see we do have one person at this moment who would like to make a comment. So phone number one nine O one is your turn to make a comment, so to unmute yourself, press star six and then state your name. You will have three minutes. So phone number one nine O one, I see that your hand is raised. Are you wishing to make community comment?
Hello?
Oh, I can hear you now, so go ahead and say your name and then you'll have three minutes for your comment.
Perfect, my name is Cara Metcalf. Are we able to go?
You are able to go, Ms. Metcalf.
All right, you guys. So I just have a couple of concerns that I want to address, and I sent an email. And so I kind of want to go over that real quick. So I'm just saying that I'm a parent, community member, and I'm writing you guys today of many concerns. With the new vaccination mandates, I am shocked to see that you're willing to fire. Oh, sorry, can you hear me? And.
Yes, we can hear you.
Sorry, um, and you guys are willing to fire staff unvaccinated that are not vaccinated. The lack of the em- empathy to detect employees is scary to me. This is a personal choice and nobody should choose between. That in their career. I understand you're following Governor Inslee mandates, however, you have had the opportunity to accept. Um, paperwork of other, or I mean, for them to figure out what else they can do. Um, you have denied most of the staff. O S P I clarified that the district choice to approve. Uh, or not to, not to approve. It seems to me that only people you are allowing to make. Um, uh. Substance for is staff at the district office. Not sure if this is correct, please explain and why this is happening. We can't afford to lose any staffs in our amazing little town. Our schools are already suffering with the current staff we have. Our children are suffering. If safety is such a concern, why do you have buses filled to the max? Siblings not sitting together. There are three people per seat. This makes no sense. Are you aware of the, what's really going on in our district? Teacher and staff are. Hired to educate and help our kids. It's not the responsibility to discuss politics or any other opinions that are going on right now. It's our parents' jobs. Again, are you aware of what's going on? Teachers bullying staff members, um, not even in class, but on social media. Um, there, this is not proper role models for our children. Have you discussed more division with our districts? We've reached out to other school districts and they have made accomplishments that are working with our staff. Um, sorry, I'm nervous. Um, this is. Uh, so I mean, I can just go on and on, but I just don't understand why, and there's so many questions and it just seems like we're not getting any answers. Um, and then also with the vaccination or the test people to see if they have COVID, is that? Done during school days and then does that take five days to come back or are you allowing, um, kids to come back or what are you doing with that? Um, once again, I just want to know if you're doing political information or are we talking about science? And just like with the vaccination or not, I don't understand it because it seems from the real science that you can still spread the virus. You can still get the virus. So I don't understand what the problem is and I don't understand why you have to fire staff for this reason. So I hope you can explain what's happening and what's going on for we understand a little bit better. So we can move on or see what we need to do in the next chapter, but I hope you. Take two extra seconds and think about what you're doing to our community that we need the staff more than anything, so. Um, so I kind of rambled on, but I really, really, um, I'm, I'm really kind of upset that we're losing some really, really good teachers over a vaccination that's not. FDA approved until twenty twenty three, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Metcalf, for your comment.
Thank you.
All right, so phone number four, six, four, seven. I see that you're wanting to make, uh, public comments, so hit star six to unmute yourself and then state your name and you'll have three minutes.
Um, hello, my name is, uh, Missy. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, hi, um, I'm a former substitute teacher, parent and community member. Um, I sent an email with no response and would just like the board to consider the following questions. I realize you cannot speak on this tonight. However, I would like to know, how many employees will be fired on October eighteenth? How many teachers? How many bus drivers? What will you do with the money saved from firing all these employees? Why are you ignoring O S P I's direction to allow exemptions and accommodations? When you, when did you know you were going to, excuse me, when did you know you weren't going to approve accommodations for staff working with students and why? Were exemptions? And why were exemptions even approved if you knew you'd be firing these employees? What is your plan to fill all of these vacant positions when there's a nation and statewide staff shortage? Will you shut down schools on the 18th if there's not enough staff? What will you tell students about firing their teacher? When will parents be notified that their child teacher is being fired? How many subs do you have lined up to replace these teachers until more staff can be hired? Are you going to hire unqualified staff to replace the qualified staff you are choosing to fire? Will you increase class sizes because you're short staff? And out of the 61% statistic that was stated earlier tonight, how many of those staff are staff that were forced to break their approved exemptions and comply with the district's personal decision so they could feed their children and family? Why are other districts capable of providing accommodations for all of their staff with religious and medical exemptions, but Shelton School District is not? Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comment. All right, is there anyone else who would like to make comment at this time? So if you would, press star nine. I'll give just another few seconds here. Want to make sure everyone has opportunity that's hoping to make comment tonight. All right, I'm starting to lose track of my phone numbers. So I believe we are on phone number nine five oh two.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. So start by stating your name, and then you'll have three minutes.
Perfect. My name's Desiree Les, and I am a teacher, parent, well, teacher for a few more days, parent and community member of the Shelton School District. And I do, I've sent numerous emails. I did actually get one response back today, and I'm hoping that that is being investigated. But I do have a couple of questions about the symptom decision tree and, and some inconsistencies that I'm finding with what is on the tree and what is actually being done at, at my building. I can't talk through any other, other buildings, but at Shelton High School. So on the exposure tree, it states that in case of any exposure, the affected should stay home and report to the office. Someone personally exposed should never report to school. Also, anyone who is awaiting COVID test results or anyone in their household who is waiting test results must stay home. So I have a question about that because we've had some recent exposures, and yet people are still coming to school. And when questioning our administrator about it, I was told that if they are vaccinated and not showing symptoms, they can come back to school. So this is staff, students, you know, any, anyone in there. As long as they're vaccinated and not showing symptoms, they can come back and be around our kids, which is a little nerve wracking to me, and, and around us. So I'm, I want you to look at your symptom tree because nowhere on there does it say anything about vaccinated or unvaccinated. And what I'm finding is that our unvaccinated students who are exposed to COVID are having to miss 14 days of school where our unvaccinated, or I mean, I'm, excuse me, where our vaccinated students are not. So there's some real inconsistencies with that. And also, something I've noticed is I have a lot of students, I've had parents actually messaging me saying that their child has COVID, and they're in my classes, yet I'm not being notified. So I'm, I'm a little concerned, like, no one's asking me, like, hey, were you around this student? We're taking the word of a high school student, you know, on who they were around. So I know you can't point out students' names and let us know, but I feel like we need to be a little, a little safer in this because I teach, like, I'm in a hands-on class, and so we're touching stuff, and, you know, we sanitize often. But I feel like if there are students that are in my class that have COVID, I haven't been contacted once. So I'm just, I'm really confused about that. So if we could look at the symptom decision tree and maybe get consistent on, you know, in each building with how we do that. If it needs to say, you know, vaccinated people don't have to quarantine, then we probably should change that because it doesn't say that. I think, I think that's pretty much it. I think the rest of my concerns were sent in an email that I believe is being taken care of. So thank you for that.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Les. Appreciate your comment. So is there anyone else that is hoping to make public comment this evening? Oh, oh, oh. So star nine, if you need to raise your hand. All right, so I am not seeing anyone else hoping to make comment, so we will go ahead and move to board member comments, item number nine. So Carrie, would you like to start us off this evening?
Sure, thanks, Sally. I wanted to let everybody know that I did attend the regional WASDA meeting that was held last week, and they did honor Sally Brownfield. I know she's not with us tonight because she's not feeling well, but that's because she's been a WASDA board member on top of being a Shelton School Board Member. And of course, when her term ends here in Shelton, her term also ends there on the WASDA School Board, but she's done an awful lot of good work there, and it was nice to see her honored during that meeting. At that meeting, they also did talk about General Assembly and whether or not they're encouraging our legislative rep to attend the General Assembly meeting that will be held virtually. And so I'm not sure if we are planning on doing that, but that, of course, then is all of the positions that WASDA then takes to the legislature. So that's something our board might want to discuss as far as that coming up. The annual meeting that they're having in November, you have to decide whether or not you're moving to a virtual option versus an in-person option. They're only able to have 800 people attend that meeting, so they have people on a waiting list. I actually did change mine from in-person to virtual myself. So you have to make that decision by next Friday. I have been attending a lot of, as many, as many of the weekly WASDA calls as I possibly can. Tim said a lot of great things at the regional meeting. He continues to give good guidance during the weekly meetings. And there are representatives from school boards across all of Washington State. And the last weekly call, they had a number of examples that many of us gave as far as impacts of the mandate. And those were things that Tim can take, that he directly goes and speaks to OSPI, the State Health Department, and directly to the governor's office. So it definitely is not just Shelton that is facing a lot of these situations due to the governor's mandate in all sorts of different facets. And there were a lot of different examples that were given that he can take as the head of the school director's organization directly to all of those people. I won't be at the next school board meeting because I will be out of state for my own job. So I won't be at that one. And, you know, if there is some way that we can better clarify some of the information that is going out to people, I think that there is always just some concerns with communication. And it, I know whether it's the symptom decision tree, and I know that that gets sent out quite a bit, but if there is confusion around that, you know, letting people know about that, I think there's some misunderstanding too about protected personal employee information, you know, that the school board directors are not hearing about specific people's situations because that is all protected private health information. So, you know, I think that there's just some misunderstandings that are going on out there as well, too, that I wanted to put out there. That is all the comments that I have this evening.
Thank you, Carrie. Marty, you are next on my list.
Thank you. Well, as Mr. Jesse and I have shared, this has been a challenging season. And one of the things I stressed that having been through challenging seasons, having worked in 30 disasters, is that challenging seasons require out-of-the-box thinking, out-of-the-box solutions. And I know that Linda and the team are coming up with what they can, but there's always room to be creative wherever possible. And the situation we're dealing with, I was just sharing with a friend this morning during another Zoom meeting. We're literally in a dang-if-you-do-dang-if-you-don't situation. A student in Wyoming was arrested, taken out in handcuffs, and not her student, handcuffed because she didn't wear a mask. But in Wisconsin, the school sued because a student didn't wear a mask and the child got a, came down with COVID. So you, you have this dynamic tension of the situation, as it said, and I'm not going to get into statistics. I had a very wise professor of my undergraduate work, University of Maryland, says, figures never lie, but liars figure. I watched earlier, read the article that said, unvaccinated people have a 97% chance of reduced chance of infection if they're around family members who have been vaccinated or had the disease. And I'm thinking, when you start using numbers like that, you get out of control. So yes, the vaccinated can receive, can get the virus. I've had friends had that happen. They can give the vax, they can do that. I'm having a challenge explaining to people that today, October 12th, the person is well and worked, can work here, but October 18th, they can't. And I also share that in my personal experience in disasters, that a chief elected officials cannot create laws under the emergency management proclamations. They cannot create law, they don't have the authority. Or in the legislature has that. The governor does not have the authority under RCW 3852 to mandate vaccines for adults. Vaccines are only for children, per RCW 2810 and some others, as I researched today. Of course, the case in the Superior Court. So there's so many different dynamics. I understand that, I'm just expressing that because I know that as a school administration, we are tasked by what OSPI and the government office do as a governmental entity. The challenge is that, and I've had comments made to me by friends, is that, for, for lack of a better word, that came to me, we're, we're working into a medical McCarthyism where the unvaccinated are treated as different subjects, as different lower standard individuals. And I don't know how to address that. I, you know, the principals and stuff can, or communicate to the staff that this shouldn't be happening. But sadly, I, I had one person say, well, I have rights because I'm vaccinated. I can go and do this, but the unvaccinated, they shouldn't be able to go eat where I eat. I'm sorry, I'm probably the oldest person here, maybe next to Sandy by a few weeks. But I've lived through situations where individuals were treated differently because of their social class, their, their skin color, or their ethnicity. And I'm seeing a similar disturbing trend between the vaccinated and the unvaccinated. And it's sad because we have a very strong community. We've worked hard as a community to overcome a lot of issues in the past. And hopefully, we can, once again, come up with some creative solutions for these, these other staff. I don't know what they are. I'm not involved in those day-to-day decisions, but I, and I have shared with the superintendent, and he shared with me, I believe he's doing the best he can with what we have. But maybe we should see, think of a few other things. And with that, I want to thank you for the time. I know I've rambled a little bit, but like I said, trying times require, you know, some creative solutions. And I've shared, I've, I've come up with some absolutely unique ideas working in disasters that no one ever thought of before, and it may not solve all the problems, but maybe it can take care of another 10 or 20%. I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Sandy.
Hi there. Thank you. You know, I haven't traveled in a very long time. And then, of course, right before the last board meeting, I traveled, and I traveled again. It was great to be away from emails and phone calls, and it was great to see citizens in large cities living life, whether they were vaccinated or not vaccinated, masked or not masked. And I had the occasion to go see the play Hamilton. And, you know, it's kind of interesting that in this time, it's that play in particular is a good reminder of our founding documents and our founders. And, you know, the, the, they reference the Declaration of Independence. And of course, then that line pops into my head about fatiguing into compliance. And, you know, that was something early on that was a concern for me. And we were careful when we did our vaccination clinics and whatnot, that no student was, you know, felt compelled to have to get the vaccine. They weren't coerced, it was all voluntary. And, you know, some of that just has, has, has disappeared. And, you know, some people say, well, it's for the public good, but, you know, that's not always, I don't necessarily believe that public good should triumph individual rights. You know, you, the Germans used public good to exterminate 6 million Jews. You know, that's, it's not, you know, like Marty said, we're in a really tough spot. You can't, no matter which way you go, you're in a lot of trouble with the other half of the people that feel the other way. But I still am hopeful that there's an 11th hour solution that comes along that, you know, has, allows for hope and understanding and, and, you know, greater accommodation. You know, maybe there's something else that can be utilized to increase accommodations. You know, the scanners or, you know, whatever else. You know, we talked about this grace and space. You know, it's been a great term that superintendent has used. And, you know, we'd just like to see that grace and space used and extended to everybody, not, not to one group of people or another group of people. You know, we need to give grace and space to everybody. There's, you know, I've heard just some districts quote their vaccination rate. I've heard other districts use a compliance rate, the number of people that are vaccinated plus the number of people that have exempt, been exempted and accommodated. I mean, what's the point of an exemption if you don't get to be exempt? There's just, it's a very complex issue. And like I said, I'm still very, still hopeful that there'll be some more, something in the 11th hour that we can, let's not wait till the 11th hour if we have any kind of temp, any kind of processes that allow us to keep more of the people that we have. You know, we don't want to self-inflict short, you know, short staffing. Let's keep as many people as we can and, you know, continue to think about ways to accommodate more and more people. And, you know, again, consider what it means to be exempt. Other than that, I just got in late last night, so that's all I have. I'm still trying to catch up on all the various emails, and there's been a flurry, so. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sandy. Sally Brownfield, I see that maybe you're here. Yes, you're here.
Yeah, I connected. I just been listening. I'm really not feeling too well today, but didn't want to miss the meeting. I have been really busy with WASDA. We've had some special board meetings. And besides being on the board, I'm on two other committees for WASDA. So doing a lot of that and regional meeting and getting ready for General Assembly. And there was a question about, I'll be at General Assembly if our board wanted me to be the vote. Or if we have a ledge rep that is also going to attend. I've been reading the emails and and, and I guess want to, want people to know that when board members don't respond to every one of them, that these are personnel issues, and they have to go through the correct process and that we don't, we don't engage in personnel matters. We want to know all the issues, and we make policy and follow all those RCWs and all those things that come down to us. But we, we don't engage in, in that process. So doesn't mean that we are. So doesn't mean that we are not listening and are very, very concerned about everything that's going on in our schools. You know, whether what, I mean, every aspect, you know, and this, this whole situation we're in is, is affecting everything from not just personnel, but even our supply lines and the food shortages and things like that. So, so still very, very tough decisions, very tough things that we have to look at, but again, hoping people remember that we are in difficult times and to be kind to one another. That's all right.
All right. Thank you, Sally. I'm glad you were able to join us tonight. So we do not have need of an executive session tonight. So we will move to item 11, which is adjournment. I would entertain a motion.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.